Just want to make sure, one, two, does that come through on your headphones?
Yeah.
Okay, one, two, three, four?
Yeah, we've got a little bit of ambient noise.
Okay, cool. Worst case scenario, we can like dial down the master a little bit, or down one notch, but just want to make sure.
I'm not, I just.
Okay, good evening. And at 7:00 PM, I will call the June 29 meeting of the Pembroke School Committee to order. We do have the first order of business, always the reorganization of the school committee after the most recent election. But before we do that, want to welcome Sue Wallinger to the table.
Thank you.
You know, I'll give Lynch credit for the comment earlier before we started the meeting that now our audience is part of the committee. So, but people who are, obviously there's nobody here, which I understand, but if people do have, while you're watching this live, you can send, you know, the se underscore info at Pembroke.
No underscore, just se info.
Oh, sorry. Seinfo@Pembroke12.org. That's the way people can interact in real time with us and try and get those topics covered during the meeting at any point. You know, if we do happen to move on, clearly we'll, we can either go back to it if it's critical or we'll get you an answer afterwards. So with that, I will turn it over for her favorite time of the 12 months of the school committee meetings, alternative meeting.
Natalie has written it out with blank and then blank, so I think I can do it. All right. So I'm going to ask for a motion to open nominations for the chair of the Pembroke School Committee for the 2021-22 year.
So, second.
Motion by Mike and second by David to open nominations for the chair of the school committee. By a roll call vote.
Does that be roll call?
Natalie wrote roll call.
A year ago, we weren't here. Does that be roll call?
Okay, so just all those in favor.
Aye.
Abstain.
How about opposed?
Opposed. I heard five ayes. Perfect. So now you guys do something for a minute.
I don't know if that was abstain or disdain, that's good to know.
Now we make a motion.
Somebody.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Mike Trupiano as chair of school committee.
Seconded, motion made by Lance and seconded by Susie to nominate Mike Trupiano as chair of the school committee.
I'm happy to do it for another year. It's been a long two years in this role and I'm happy to do it just for, obviously for continuity. But what I'd like to do is have a couple people talk a lot more about what we do. It could be one-on-one meetings, whatever, just so someone's prepared because after a while, the same voice in the same role makes it a little bit tough. Not tough, but it's just, so that would be the only thing I would ask. I'm happy to train, talk, and Lance, you did it before. You know, it's a little bit different than, than sitting there, but I'm happy to do it. I think we have a really great group of people, great administration, so happy to continue it. But I would like to make sure we get some apprentices so that we can, we can share in the, in the glory. So, but thank you.
Are there any other nominations? And I'd ask for a motion to close nominations for the chair of the Pembroke School Committee for the 2021-22 year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Susie and second by David to close the nominations for the chair of the Pembroke School Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
What's yours, Mike?
Do you get a vote?
Oh, all those in favor of Mike Trupiano, I had to scroll down, this chair of the Pembroke School Committee for the 21-22 year. Hi.
Oh, we said aye, yep.
You're good.
Sorry, okay.
Chair takes over.
Feel good?
That's what it says, chair takes over.
Good job, Natalie.
Whoa, Natalie.
Thank you. This is year six?
This is my seventh time. This is the start of year seven now, yeah.
We'll add that to the goals as we go forward. So with that, so is there a motion to open nominations for the vice chair of the Pembroke School Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by David, second by Lance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? That's unanimous. Okay, I open nominations, we have open nominations for the vice chair of the school committee. Is there a nomination?
Anybody want to do it? Yeah, I'm happy to stay and learn.
Yep, that's fine.
Senior guy. Big gap at senior guy.
So, motion to nominate David to continuing the role.
So is there a second?
Second.
Good. Five minutes in.
Get on the board.
Absolutely. Can I get on the scorecard? Okay, so any other, any other nominations? Okay, is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close?
Motion by Lance, second by?
Second.
Susie. Okay, all those, all those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, all those in favor of the nomination of David Boyle as vice chair? Opposed, abstained? That's unanimous. Now, the envious role of secretary of the Pembroke School Committee. Is there a motion to open nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lance, second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, is there a nomination for secretary? You can't nominate yourself if you'd like.
I nominate Susie.
That Sue?
I have, I have two Sues. Take your pick.
Take your pick. There you go.
You want a second?
That, you're, I nominate Sue.
I'll second that.
So motion by Susie, second by Lance on that. Is, are there any other nominations? Okay, is there a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lance, second by Susie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? You can't oppose. All right. And all those in favor of the nomination of Susan Ballinger for secretary of the Pembroke School Committee?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. It, just for the people who are watching, it's a little bit of a standing joke because the secretary, when we're in executive session, if Natalie's not here, is the one responsible for taking our minutes. So it always goes to the newest member of the committee without any type of argument.
Which I found a loophole for.
There you go. So, thank you. So bill schedules are circulating, I know. We have to get a third signature on those.
So I added Susie for this week just because we have a time crunch. Town hall needs the turnovers as soon as possible for tonight.
Okay, I'll do mine tonight. So, yeah, so David and I can carry over, which is fine. Just so everybody understands, or for you to understand, we used to sign the warrants by hand, had to have three signatures. Every bill that's paid by the district has to have three signatures and it goes to the town collector's office, treasurer collector's office. They will then pay the bill after it has three signatures in the superintendent. We switched to electronic signatures a few years ago, make it a lot more efficient rather than boxes of paper, which was kind of difficult because you can look at them online. We just need three signatures. Last year it was David, Jim, myself. David and I will carry over, which is fine. But does anyone prefer, Susie, if you would?
Doesn't bother me. I felt like I was refinancing my mortgage. It's all good.
Exactly. Yeah, and you're looking at them just for, make sure payments to the right accounts and things, right accounts.
Do they see them though? Do they get?
It comes as a read-only to you, to the other two that are non-signups.
Okay, all right. I wasn't sure if you're sorry or not, so.
Yeah, things you're looking at, you've just, I know that I'm looking at is things paid out of the right account. Does the expense look reasonable based upon what it is? I know I've, you know, asked Aaron when they change the format of the warrant or I question, question just, okay, where are we paying this for, that for? Those are just the things we're looking at. Fair enough? Okay, so we'll continue on with that. Okay, bill schedules. We have the, we have the minutes from June 8. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 8?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by David, second by Susie. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? That is unanimous too. Okay, superintendent's report, school committee subcommittee planning. So I'll, let me start this off and you can kind of take it from there. So I sent this out yesterday. I apologize. I sent it off my MacBook, so it came in the MacBook format. I'll change that to Word going forward. But as you can see, Sue, because you're going through this for the first time, Lance, you're going through this for the first time, although you know the subcommittees we have. These are our subcommittees for the year. What I threw in there, just for our discussion, we can have a discussion tonight, is, actually, that should have been fiscal year '22. I was thinking more of work anyway. The priorities, because we went, I don't want to say a year without subcommittees, but we, some of them met less frequently or we didn't get as much through. Try to look at what are the things we need to focus on in those subcommittees over the next 12 months so that we can at least have a plan, rather than coming in blank. Now, these things aren't, these are for discussion purposes only. If somebody has something else, throw it in there. You disagree, we'll take it out. And it doesn't mean this stays in there and the only things we're going to do. So that's the first part. That's the far-right-hand column. So whatever we're looking to do, and I can walk through what they are if people have questions. Members are obviously in the middle and we can change. Clearly, we have to replace Jim, but if there are people who have certain subcommittees they would prefer to go to or not be on, that's fine. The only comment I will make before I stop, pause for questions, then we can walk through the priorities, is I would recommend keeping negotiations where they are. Where we're in the process of a teacher's contract, it wouldn't help the process by switching at this point. So, so you'll, we have executive sessions every meeting and you'll get updates and we'll talk about what's going on. So you'll be obviously part of the process, but as far as negotiating with, with the union, it helps to keep continuity. Fair enough?
Sure.
Questions, comments, or thoughts on any of this so far?
So when does, does this change once a year or is it like, so next year at this time?
No, it'll change now for this, for the year. So we're not just going to take Jim's name out, put your name in. We'll figure out where people want to go, but this is the time we put people on the subcommittees.
Okay, so no, I guess my question's for negotiations. Like, so does that just stay, like, does that change at any given point?
It can if all of a sudden, so, you know, somebody in the negotiation subcommittee, which is Susie and David, if something comes up and they no longer can make the meetings, which are generally Monday afternoons, then we would swap them out. Or the alternate, I would go or become the regular member and we'll put another alternate. We try to keep as much, again, continuity to it as possible. And what, it, the committee isn't active unless there's a negotiation going forward. So when the teacher's contract is finalized, the committee will still be in existence, but won't do much. And depending upon the term of the contract, we'll still make, name people to it next year, but they probably wouldn't be active if there wasn't a contract negotiation.
Yeah, to your point, I think, what Mike's saying is get through this negotiation with our group and then we'll reevaluate if that process.
Yeah.
Right, right. Got it. Okay.
And again, I started as the alternate on that committee and then when Jim's work schedule, I became Jim and then Mike was able to fill in, so.
That makes sense. Okay.
Plus, we traditionally do interspace bargaining with our teachers unit here and there's a significant training portion associated with that. So if there's others that are interested in joining negotiations for their future rounds, we'd want to make sure that they have an opportunity to get the training too.
Okay.
And Mike, should we, because I know we have the social justice steering committee with a volunteer from our committee on that. So will that rotate too? Because right now that, I'm in that role, but I think we probably should add that to this?
We can add to it. If you want to stay, you can. Because the same thing is PTAD, Pembroke Titans Against Drugs. They're, part of their bylaws is as a school committee member, always part of the board.
And you, and you and Ginny have done that, right?
Yeah, when Ginny was transitioning off, we kind of overlapped for a little bit. And then when she left, then I stayed on and I'm happy to stay on that. But you bring up a good point. If you choose to come off that, the social justice.
I, I like doing it. I enjoy it. I'm not asking to, to step away. And I think, I feel like that we're kind of in midstream from a continuity perspective. I think it would be difficult. Are you okay with me standing there? Stuff, I don't mean to put you on the spot and that was kind of a stupid question.
No, I think the continuity would be helpful.
Yeah.
Should we put her on as the member though?
Yeah, I'm just going to add PTAD in.
We'll add that, yeah, we'll add those to this list because we've never really considered it on the list.
And should we designate a backup though? Because just in case, you know, sometimes buses do hit people. So I'm just saying, we should, you know.
We can. Yeah. I like to think maybe just you hit the lottery. Let's go that way.
Somebody did.
Somebody did, remember. Okay, fair enough. Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't we, for the membership of the committees, why don't you reach out between now and our next meeting and let me know which ones? And there's, again, it's not a bad thing if you want to come off or you want to replace somebody or you just want to get on the other subcommittee. We can work out the numbers and how it all kind of comes with the fund. Just a couple of things on this fiscal strategy and subcommittee, we refer to as budget subcommittee, but we changed it. And the reason why we changed the name and I look at it, is the town does have a, we used to be cash management, but it's fiscal strategy, which discusses the town as a whole. It deals with mainly revenue at the town level or had been, hasn't been active in several years now. We used to meet monthly and now it hasn't. It really is kind of at the, the whim of the board of select, with a select board on what they choose to, you know, when they need them. But if this does, then we usually have the folks from budget subcommittee go over. What I put for the priorities and we'll stop and see if there are others. Just basically the plan for the remaining cares is in our money and there's more money coming in. Actually tried to reach out, I did reach out to Greg Hanley, haven't heard back last week or the week before. And I'll follow up again on timing, amount, and process. Because you're talking about the county will administer those funds again. And if they do, what are they going to allow us to do? What's the process to submit? Because we need to make sure we have, we've gone through this a couple of times, looked at all the buckets, what we've spent it on, what's remaining and how we're going to deal with it going forward. So some of these funds will end up in fiscal year '22, some will go forward into '23. So that was the one I had for a major priority, clearly besides balance of budget.
And the documents associated with the ARPA funds, the ARPA funds, require a subcommittee meet to discuss them that have membership from the school committee, from the town, from the teachers. There's a bunch of stakeholders outlined.
Yeah, so as you can see, each bucket of funds has come with a different set of guidelines and how to, how to administer. Some were focused just PPE, some were turn to learn and more infrastructure. And now these are going to have a different set of requirements too. And so that, that's one of the things. Any other things that people think we need to hit this? Understand that this is not long-range planning.
The only thing I'm looking at, Mike, is currently I'm on four committees. I'm three committees and one alternate. I think that's because I end up on negotiations.
Yeah.
So I'm just not sure. I mean, I'm happy to step back from any one if somebody wants to fill a slot and I'm happy you staying with all four. It doesn't.
Let's see who, absolutely. Let's see who steps forward.
Yeah, again, negotiations I'd have to stay with and after that.
I, as we go into this fiscal year, we're going to, we're going to need to be more active with the subcommittees and I think we have to be more than a traditional year. Normally, you know, they'll leave once a month or once every other month or in some cases twice a month, depending on what's happening. I think these are going to have to meet in the, the more frequent timeframe, maybe twice a month for the beginning because we need to get caught up on a couple of things. Because again, we still met last year. Obviously we had a budget. We, you know, we had, still got a long-range plan and we thought capital money and town meeting. But we didn't need as frequently so that we're well-prepared or better prepared for two, three years out. So excellent point, David, because it's going to be a lot. We have to spread the word. Anything else on the fiscal subcommittee that we should want to tackle? Okay. Education Subcommittee, I throw up there, hands-on vocational opportunities. That's what Mary Beck during her presentation did or talked about because there's a potential capital component, but there's also curriculum component. There's also some work going on, great work going on with the Chamber of Commerce. Give a shout out to Peter Brown who recommended it and Kyle Harney has been great in helping it move forward. But I think we need to, you know, again, have educational subcommittee look at it, be a part of it, just so that we understand and it be that bridge between the committee and what's going on in the administration. And the other is school start times. We did get some notes from some students. I was supposed to meet with one, unfortunately timing didn't work out about school start times. We haven't looked at it since 2017. It's worth a look again to see what we're going to do. I'm not sure if people saw, but there was a very emotional vote in North Andover or, I want to say maybe emotional's a bad word, but it was, it was definitely a contested vote of, because of some of the issues. When we look at this, clearly there's some of the studies around learning, but then where we have a block schedule. There's also time in learning where, just real quick, we have one of the longest school days in the South Shore and you just can't, if we pushed everything out, we really put North Pembroke at a disadvantage. You flip-flop, there's a different issue with those. You go to two, it's a different issue. And you have to compare everything from release for athletics to, again, kind of that time in learning and impact to learning if we had to make a budget change because it's pretty significant. So those are the two things I had for education. So anybody have anything else they're thinking of?
Just for Lance and Sue that are new to this, the other topics that generally come to Edsub are our handbooks, our program of studies for both the middle school and the high school. In years past, we've looked at accelerated at the elementary level. So anything kind of in that bucket would, you know, traditionally come to that group. What Mike is suggesting is larger topics on top of what's.
Right, no, and I would just build on that, all the learnings we've taken from the pandemic and the different modes and the different styles, how do we continue to build on that moving forward? I think that would be a key integration with this component here to really keep moving that forward, right?
That's a great point. Because kids are used to using a lot of this and let's not have it on the church. And good thoughts.
I'd like to be on the education committee.
The days, the days for the microfiche are gone, yes.
Well, we might still have some somewhere.
I'm sure we do. So what I can add to that is integrate pandemic best practices. Yeah, actually, I know, Susie, that's part of your goals and we'll get to that in a minute. So excellent one. Anything else? Okay, long-range planning. So through three things in here. So the update of capital plan based on cares, are, are, what, all the funds we received. So great thing, we bought 1,800 Chromebooks last year. Challenge, in two to three years, those 1,800 Chromebooks are going to be old, damaged, need replacing. So it was a huge amount of funds that came in at once, that came in without impact to the town. We need to figure out how we're going to maintain and sustain that. That's not going to be easy and it's clearly going to take some planning. We had, you know, technology in our plan anyway, but we weren't, we're not a one-to-one district, but we're pretty close to it. So we have to figure out how we're going to maintain that because we don't want to take a step backwards. Second is next phase of CPC. We put together a few years ago a four-stage plan. Finally, we're able to complete year one before the pandemic. Phase one, sorry, phase one. So there's three other phases. We need to look to see is the plan, the right plan? Is it, you know, the meaning, the timing, and then work with CPC in order to get funds allocated through town meeting.
Right. And the focus of the plan is our field at all of our schools. So getting the irrigation at the high school and at North, some work at the Bryantville Fields as well as the middle school and Hobart Homes.
And high school baseball.
High school baseball, yes.
Yeah, so we're trying to get back to, you know, again, the fields haven't been touched since the schools were all renovated. So we need to do something with them to make sure that, you know, the kids have outdoor spaces as much as anything else. And also when you think about me, you know, to help bring up baseball, baseball has to leave the campus in order to play games and practice. It would be a lot easier and a lot better if that team was able to play on campus. You need to have more kids go to games, I'm sure. And just it makes it a lot easier, whether it be for the coaches or transportation. So the next, so that was next phase CPC. Plans for the hash building. I think everybody is acutely aware, we voted for a new community center on Saturday and now that project will begin at some point relatively soon. We need to. We need to determine what are we going to do with the Hatch Building. It's right in front. Hatch Building is not part of the project.
I was gonna say, was there some clarity? Because we, looking at the plans, wasn't the plans on top of the Hatch Building?
Yeah, it wasn't in the picture, right?
Right. The Hatch Building isn't in their photo. It seems to be like in the footprint of where some of the traffic pattern is. But when Andrew was here, he did clarify that they're not, there's no inclusion of that building in the project.
So originally, I think we thought it might have been, but then obviously it was pulled out for different reasons. Now, the Hatch Building may qualify for CPC. If not, we have to figure out how do we fund it and what it's going to take. Because clearly, we'd rather go to CPC, because it's not a direct impact on, on the tax base. But the building right now is not in condition where it can house any program. And if we were to bring a new program in there, we have to become ADA compliant. There's a second floor. Erin and I were talking today, the restrooms on the first floor aren't ADA compliant, so there's work that needs to be done.
There's a stipulation for how it's used.
Correct. So-
Educational purposes, right?
Yeah. Well, it's a loose stipulation of what educational purposes mean. It could be anything from, and we've talked about it at this table, where we put a program in there, potentially for the high school, rather than, in some cases, those students going out of district. That's one thing we had discussed. You know, could you put office space in there? Could you, you know, work and try and do something with recreation? I'm not sure. There's lots of different options for it. I think what we have to do is figure out the footprint of the building. What can we do with that? What it would take to modify it, and then figure out what the use is in conjunction before we ever try to-
And not to double down, but given the community centers ago, is there, you know, the, I think we have to start thinking now as that, there were, you did get the bids and build, I think, can we partner with them? I mean, we're running programs out of our cafeterias and things like that, so can we think about that? Because I'm sitting, my wheels were kind of turning like, you know, does the Hatch Building ultimately become a place where they can pick up for those out of district? You know, I don't know. There's a lot of things that we could-
Right. It's also a historical building. So I know a couple of years ago, we ran into some issues when we were trying to replace the front door. So there's a whole host of other parameters associated with the historical stuff, historical piece to the building. In years past, we've rented it to the Pilgrim Area Collaborative for their office space. Again, the building isn't in the condition where students would be able to be inside, but we've used it for office space before. The footprint of the building is actually pretty small. There is a first and a second floor, but it is, you know, the way it's put together right now, it's a pretty small footprint, but happy to-
Would work for like tutoring, because I see staff members often helping students, you know, on their own time, obviously, but in the library, it might be a little more private opportunity, where they wouldn't necessarily have the rental space for, you know-
Right. But there's operational costs to keeping that building running. So I'm happy to take anybody on a tour.
So just for, right now, it's not being used at all?
Correct.
Right now, it's vacant, so we have everything set at the lowest set point, as far as heat and electricity and whatnot, but-
Are we, are we allowed to lease it to another entity that would use it for educational purposes?
Yeah. So that's what PAC, Pilgrim Area Collaborative, was doing. But then they didn't have any programs still in Pembroke, so they moved to a location closer to some of their programs. In its current state, I'm not sure we'd get any new renters there, but PAC had been in there for a while.
Can we partner with VOTAC, that, with some of the, you know, more traditional, you know, carpentry skills and things like that, and maybe use that skill set as tied to an apprenticeship?
Well, Susie, I can't wait to take you on a tour.
I, I know. You'll have to come see some of the houses we've bought over the years. I'll help. I can drywall, so.
There's a lot of asbestos on that second floor.
So there's asbestos in like paint in the building, because you're looking at the age of it. So it's not just go in there, throw a coat of paint, throw up a couple of walls, expand a doorway, change the sink and things.
Oh, yes.
Just, just kind of-
Just bang the, bang the doors before you walk in.
We're gonna wait till it cools off a little bit. It's a little oppressive in there right now.
Ball is good for me.
And do it at daytime, just when the light scares off some of the things that live in there now. I'm just trying, trying to be a-
There's just a small waiver we need to sign.
Yeah.
There's a hazmat suit in your son's-
Everybody, okay?
We got all kinds of vaccinations. We're good.
Send the heavier people in first, two on the floors.
Okay. Policy, two things thrown in here. MASCE updates are some that have come out over the past year that we just need to include. MASCE Mass Association of School Committees does issue periodic updates to policies that they ask the members or recommend the members adopt. So we just have to do that. We've, you know, thanks to Sue Scroggins, we've updated all of our name and numbering, name and numbering of all of the policies, so that they're in the, I think, American Association of School Boards, or National Association of School Boards, MASP. So we're in that, we're in compliance with that, but we want to make sure we get the policies that they say. And then going to what Susie and Mary Beth talked about earlier, we're gonna get feedback from Social Justice Working Committee, and we need to make sure that before anything that they recommend gets to the full committee for consideration, the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee is looking at. Fair enough. Anything else, actually, sorry, anything else I missed on long-range planning or policy, or we should consider?
Mary Beth and I were actually talking a little bit earlier today about where you think some of the mission statement work should go.
That's a great question. It's not policy. It's not long-range planning. Would it tie into education?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think it hits all of them. So it's a piece of everything in there. You know, it's your philosophy and, and some practical things as well, so. I don't think it's bad to start it, maybe in education, and then move it, you know, move it to different committees as, as it makes sense.
So we'll put it under education, then, if that's okay, unless anybody disagrees with that? Good? Okay. Excellent point. Okay. Just negotiations we talked about. Government Study, Government Study Committee, Capital Planning Committee. This was when the town was looking to change their capital spending process. And they were doing what they were called the Milton Plan, which has to, which has to do with borrowing and all sorts of other stuff. And every town, major town department had a representative, police chief, fire chief, PPW, Select Board, you know, we were there to try to determine what the approach was going to be, and then how we would do capital. Capital used to be a fall item, got moved to the spring and things like that. So anyway, that committee hasn't met at least two or three years. Oh, they were, at one point, they had talked about taking a percentage of town revenues to use. And I forget the percentage. I don't want to misrepresent it, but that's what they were, just trying to figure out how to do capital. We've been fortunate that we've put in things through the, you know, through the town, but we've also funded some capital items for our operating budget out of need. So anyway, that committee, we don't think we have to name anybody unless they choose to, to open a backup.
And question tied to that, because it's such a financially driven piece, should somebody from the first fiscal strategy committee usually will speak on that one, since they kind of partner?
We could. When we did this, you actually were on it.
I was on it, and I would say respectfully, some was my fault. We had two email addresses. Instead of saying, okay, we're gonna meet the second Tuesday of every month, they sent out this massive email, and people would be, well, I can do Monday, I can do Friday. And when I tell you, you know, it was one of those things, oh, the meeting was last night. You're like, wait a second. The last email I had said, you know, kind of, it was kind of organized chaos. I don't think we did as good a job as we could have done.
Yeah.
It was confusing, to say the least.
I went once and asked too many questions and didn't get asked again.
So I would actually suggest that you name somebody for that. I do think that that conversation is gonna pick up some steam as we get into the latter part of this winter and spring, because a lot of our schools are falling off the debt exclusion. So the Milton Plan is that debt exclusions that were previously voted become part of the base moving forward, even though the debt exclusion was for a certain period of time. So I think over the next six to 12, even 18 months, that, that concept is gonna float around a little bit more frequently. So if we already have somebody named, we'd be ready to kind of jump right in. I've heard a lot of conversation through some of the community center around, you know, when's the right time, and people kind of talking about the fact that a lot of the debt is about to fall off.
That was the argument at town meeting, and that's, I think, one of the selling points was the finances would be there for the other buildings as debt came off.
Comes off the school.
And we did, we did something similar in Carver to that. That's how we built, that's how they built the new fire station, police station in Carver, from that money that came off the library when that finished up. So, yeah, I've been a part of that process.
I'm gonna put Lance's name.
Gives you an opportunity to have conversations on the background from here.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so the Select Board doesn't reorganize until a week from tomorrow? They're not meeting tomorrow? Guess there was some session or conflict. So they're meeting a week from tomorrow. We'll find out who it is, and then find out, and then when we get to our next meeting, we'll find out if they're actually gonna do anything again. So, okay. Any other questions or comments on what we're, what we'll try to accomplish this year, or what the priorities are? And then obviously, we'll have other work that comes along and has to hit each of the committees. But any questions or thoughts?
The last one is legislative, right?
Oh.
This stuff comes from your secretary, AKA Natalie. I'm not your secretary.
Natalie, I'm blaming the messenger, not you. So we need a legislative, legislative agent. That's the person who interfaces with Representative Cutler and Senator Moran.
That, that was me, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we can maintain now. We can change it, really, if anybody cares to. I did meet with Representative Cutler about a month ago, just to talk about some of the things that were going on, talk about funding and stuff like that. And he recommended when we finished, because we had a good conversation, trying to get together with the Chair of the Select Board, and whoever was the Chair of the School Committee at the time, well, would be next for this year, try to talk through the, you know, with the three of us about get locally and Frank Creed, that open lines of communication, because we haven't had that. So we can figure out how we want to do it. We can even double-peat it however we choose.
Yeah. And I know we try to bring him into a meeting, what, usually February or March?
February or March. And we'll be prob, what I would recommend, because of the way the calendars are, let's get into the summer. Let's have them give us a fall update, you know, in September, October, and see where things are headed. You can start to talk about, at that point, you'll have at least a quarter, quarter and a half of revenues at the state level, so you'll see what's going on. They are going to have probably, as they always do, a full legislative calendar. They'll be going into an election year, which usually bodes well for funding, you know, across the board. That's not intended to be taken negatively towards anybody, but it just seems as though state government, regardless of who's been the rep, who's been the senator, who's been the governor, seems to come up with money on those election-type years, but we'll figure that out. Is that fair? Okay. All right. So let myself, Erin, either one of us, both of us, neither of us know. Who wants to be on one? We'll organize those in the next meeting. Okay. DESE guidelines for summer programs.
Yes. I am excited to share with you that previously DESE had shared their guidance for summer programs that they would continue with the same guidelines in place that we had for the end of our school year, so masking and distancing. But they have since come out and changed that guidance to no masks are necessary indoor for students during summer programming. They are obviously still recommended for those that have not been vaccinated, but there is no requirement. So I am happy to share with you that that is how we will be opening our summer programs, starting next Tuesday with our ESY and some of our traditional summer schools, with masking being optional and recommended for those that are unvaccinated but not required. It is a good sign that that is what the fall will look like as well. DESE did release their initial fall guidance that does say that masks are not required, but again, recommended for those that are unvaccinated. But they obviously reserve the right to go back to that as we get further into the summer to see if anything has changed. But students would still need to wear masks on our transportation at this point. So we do have some students that are taking the vans and whatnot to our summer programming. So the transportation masking guidance hasn't changed. That's a separate department than DESE. So students would still be masks on the transportation, but once they got to school, they would no longer need to be masked, which is very exciting.
So do we anticipate realistically starting the end of August, what we call normal, again? You know, kind of no masks and-
Yeah. I mean, I think the guidance will continue to say three feet of physical space between desks. But that has always been at least what we've had here. Three feet seat edge, middle of seat edge to middle of seat edge is a very narrow aisle. It's, you know, when we were kind of plotting out for the school year, it's more narrow than any classroom we've ever had before. The only, with that three feet of space, the only thing that could potentially still be a little bit different for us in the fall is some of our early education classrooms, or the preschools or the kindergartens. We may still need to keep those students in desks if there's a spacing requirement, as opposed to the tables that they've been in in years past. But no masks, no single directional hallways, none of that.
But do we anticipate going back to like three sports seasons and vans and all?
Absolutely.
What is it, fall two kind of goes away now? Okay. A lot of people ask that question. I said, I'm under the impression, yes, but let me-
Have football in the winter again.
Can I ask one question, too, and I just, I don't know, it probably fits in a certain way. When I first started on the committee, we had a couple of, I guess you'd call them student representatives?
Yes.
And I thought that was a nice touch back then. I think we got them a little more involved, but are we getting away from that or trying to get back to it?
No, I'm happy to, this past year was just different.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
So I'm happy to get a student rep going. The way we did it in the past was having one senior and one junior, so that there was some sort of, you know, continuity to a student being able to serve two years on. Happy to do that. I will say, for students, it does get to be a bit of a time crunch for them when we're talking about sports and extracurricular activities. But I think if we have two, it would be helpful to-
We didn't get anybody-
We didn't get any interest, yeah.
So, but yeah. And actually, this was part of one of the things, it's gonna be a good segue when we get to it on the goals, because that was in your comments, and we'll talk about that in a minute.
So we'll get that up as an offering for students right at the start of the call?
Actually, it's a good point. But usually, the kids who are volunteering aren't worried about the fourth.
Aren't on there. That's true.
Anything else?
That's it. Movement in the direction that we were hoping for.
Sounds great. So what I did is, as I, we talked about the last meeting, I took the edits from Susie, the edits from myself, to put together a combined goals. Susie, if I missed anything, please let me know.
Okay.
I thought I got everything, because I just, some of the comments were almost identical, so I just kept what was there. I added other things. And then where you see a sub-bullet below the bullet, which is, I thought, in a couple of areas, but it didn't flow through that way, that was the things that I added from Susie's stuff. But anyway, we'll, let's come up with comments prior to the next meeting, based upon the document you have in front of you, and we will move to finish them at our next meeting. So if we look at the calendar, sorry, if we look at future agenda items, we have the two that are there that, for carryovers. Goals will come in July. We should put a legislative update for October onto the bottom piece, too.
Okay.
Because that'll, just that way, we keep it on there, and so we know when to reach out. And then we'll add things as we go forward. What are we thinking for dates? We talked about, what's the July date?
We talked about July 13th. The last time we can turn over FY '21 bills to the town is July 12th, so it just made sense to be closed on July 13th, if that's a possible meeting date for us.
Did we have, no, I'm sorry, I'm saying, I thought we had another one before that, but yeah, I have the 13th.
Yeah.
So July 13th, we'll meet again. Is that good for everybody?
Yes.
We'll do a closeout on that night. And the closeout is we, we vote what the final budget number is. We encumber some things that we couldn't, that we couldn't get delivered or have pay or whatever by June 30th, where we have outstanding bills, POs that have been issued but not signed, whatever. And we determine if we're gonna turn money back over to the town for free cash. That's the main focus of that meeting.
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll do goals also that night. Do we want to talk about any other meetings the rest of July and August now? I don't know what people have for vacations. Anyone have any particular dates we want to stay away from?
Following week. It's compromised down for us, so stay away from the 20th.
We won't be meeting back-to-back weeks.
You want to look into August, or?
Do we want to go into August? That's fine with me.
I think one meeting in July should cover us.
It should. If we need to, we'll cut, we'll call something, and let me look real quick and look at the calendar.
You guys know what should I do in the middle of August?
Maybe not band camp week, though. That's a long day for, for everybody.
When's band camp?
August 16th through the 20th. So if we were getting any updates from different ones, maybe they could, a lot of families would be around.
Okay.
Stay away from that.
So that would put us on the 24th. Which that's, is that the day before the first day of school?
No, the first day of school's August 30th, for teachers.
So I was potentially away the 24th, but let me see if I can change that. So that would put us out till the 31st. Oh, no, we can't do the 17th, you're saying, Susie?
Well, I'm just questioning, because I know the band camp goes all that week. How does that affect you guys? Are you around here for that?
Oh, they have not invited me to participate in the band camp. I don't have any skills whatsoever. They do invite me to the picnic at the end of the week.
You know, because I don't, I don't anticipate being on the field.
We just go at the end for the glory. That's it.
There you go. Okay. Just was throwing that out there, so.
So can we go August 17th? Is that good, bad? Is that good, bad?
Will that work for me?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
There's just one thing under the summer offerings that I wanted to update you all on. The last time we met, we had talked about that early literacy program and the potential need for some students to have transportation. So Jess has reached out to the families that declined to participate in the program to see if transportation was the deciding factor for them, and we did find a handful of families where it was. So we have been working to set them up transportation for next week, between pairing some of it with our other ESY programs and whatnot that we have in the district. So I think there was maybe five or six that ended up needing transportation. And then the other thing I wanted to add is that the athletic department is going to